Right now, I think in that fund, there is a hundred thousand.
Hundred eleven thousand.
Hundred eleven thousand, thank you. Is that your question? Jim Burlow Scrabble World, we've already got a hundred eleven thousand dollars. It's just been stated they want to spend roughly ten thousand dollars this year. We have a hundred and eleven thousand dollars in this fund. I think that's enough for this year. Maybe we could forego spending and funding every capital reserve fund that comes across our tables here.
So we do have a motion to move the question and a second. I let the people speak who were in line. Okay, thanks Becky. All those in favor of moving the question, raise your cards. All those opposed, the ayes have it, we are now prepared to vote on the amendment to Article Four to reduce it to one dollar. All those in favor of the amendment, raise your cards. All those opposed. Okay, the amendment fails and we are now back to Article Four as originally written and submitted.
I'd like to move the question for Article Four.
Liz declares herself in line, so Liz, step up.
So Liz Furia, I'm very in favor of a police facility. I'm very opposed to a municipal building. It took four town meetings to pass the fire station and the-
So that's the next article.
Yeah, I know, but he also referenced it. And the reason we don't have a plan is because the plan has drastically changed and it's no longer a police facility. The police deserve a police station.
Thank you, Dunham, I have a question, and it relates to what Chief Maturoff said about the location. If it's going to the rec center as currently thought, that involves Plan New Hampshire, and I thought we were told when Plan New Hampshire came up that we didn't have to follow any of the recommendations for structure. And one of the structures over there was to add the town office and other facilities to that plan. So are we following Plan New Hampshire's premise that the town has to discuss what they want to do with all the elements of Plan New Hampshire? I'm questioning that.
The municipal building and the Plan New Hampshire Community Design Seminar Weekend have absolutely nothing to do with each other, and Plan New Hampshire actually did not put a municipal building on that plan.
I thought someone said at that, that, well, let's enlarge the current thing and make it a municipal center, and I've heard that from a couple of employees.
Sounds like a rumor mill, but you know.
Ah, but I just want clarity, because that is the rare center of property.
There is a separate building on the Plan New Hampshire charret design that is designed as a community center. So think about, I think many of you were here this morning, there's standing room only, several rows deep. We literally do not have, this is the only indoor basketball facility that we have in the town of Brentwood. It's not safe for kids, and it's not actually a regulation basketball court. We don't have any place for the community to congregate, and so, hold on, so the design concept idea that was put forward by the Plan New Hampshire folks was that we should have something like that. It was an idea. This versus the municipal building and complex and police facility, completely separate, unrelated.
Well, I thought I saw that on the diagram, I could be wrong, it's been almost a year.
PlanNH.org, you can pull it up right now on your phones, and you can see that it's not theirs.
Okay, thank you. And the last question was, is, well, maybe it applies to, if that is the location, what about the deed for the land that was donated by the two families that donated all that land? Are there any restrictions on that? As to the use?
There are restrictions on it. It is to be used for specific purposes of recreational purpose only, until there is a use that is for the whole town as determined by the select.
Thank you, I just wanted to clear.
There is something in writing, you can-
Okay, no, thank you, just wanted to know that, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move the question for Article Four. All those in favor of moving the question, all those opposed, the ayes have it, we are now prepared to vote on Article Four in its original form. All those in favor of adopting Article Four, all those opposed, Article Four passes. We have a motion to restrict reconsideration of Article Four and a second, all those in favor, all those opposed, we have restricted reconsideration for Article Four, and we are moving on to Article Five. Police to Municipal Building Capital Reserve Fund. This is recommended by the select board. To see if the town will vote to change the purpose of the existing police facility capital reserve fund to the multi-purpose municipal building capital reserve fund under the provisions of RSA 35-1 for the design and construction of a new municipal facility. Further, to name the select board as agents to expend from said fund. This is a two-third vote required by the municipal majority. Do I have a motion from the select board?
Motion.
Okay, Article Five has been moved and seconded, and the select board will have an opportunity to speak to it first.
Thank you, so this is, Becky, this is more related to what we were just talking about. This changes the purpose of the CRF, the capital reserve fund, to allow it to be used towards the feasibility, design, and construction of a police facility that would also include the town offices. With the growth of the town and increased need for services and the existing deficiencies with the town office and police states, we would relocate all the services to the grounds of the BRC. So to clarify where we're going with this, is we're trying to make the most effective use of the town's resources, space, and our money, so that we can plan effectively and efficiently for the future, right? So we don't want to just have a ton of buildings all over the place, we're looking to make sure that we have a solid facility where it's going to last us many years into the future, and we also want to take advantage of the potential benefits of moving all of the facilities at the same time, rather than dealing with maintenance issues that are cropping up year after year.
Thank you. Exactly what he said, all I'm asking for, folks, is just to allow me the ability to look into a municipal facility. What you folks pay all of your department heads for and everything is to look out for your town, and that's really what I'm trying to do here. I'm trying not to be myopic. I've tried to avoid what I perceive as a mistake that this town made seven years ago when it built a fire department without even considering, a real consideration for a public safety building. I know it was in talks, and I know there were many revisions, but I think we lost an opportunity there. I don't want to lose another one. I wanted to just at least look at it, okay? You still have the final vote on all of this, and I'm really hoping to get everything together for you in a big vote by next year, so you can vote on it next year. We're having monthly meetings, and I welcome any of you to please attend these meetings, okay? This is very important for your town. It's a look towards the future, okay? If we have the ability to at least look at feasibility of moving our town offices into the same facility, brand-new facility, over an area where there's already talks of development over there in other areas, think about what a beautiful area that could be over there. Almost all of our town offices over there. So we just want to look at, and all I'm asking you to do is just choose the purpose of this fund to reflect that we can look at it on the municipal building, not just a police facility.
Okay, so Article Five is open for discussion and debate.
Sorry, I just have two clarifying questions. Could you just tell us when and where those meetings are? I'm sorry, I'm supposed to direct my questions to you.
Thank you.
But he's probably going to answer it.
Yes, we post them normally on a Tuesday.
Okay.
Generally around the Thursday, but we post them online, and they're posted in public places at the downtown.
Thanks so much. And then, this one is recommended by the select board, does it not need to be reviewed by the budget committee because it's not dollars being spent?
Correct, there's no appropriation associated with it.
Thank you so much, appreciate it, quick.
Harry Lindsey, 231 Middle Road. I know we're voting on just going forward, but my question is, if this goes for the current municipal building, what happens to that? Because then we'd be maintaining two buildings anyways, wouldn't we?
So, this is really just allowing us, as the chief was saying, to look at the development. So nothing is going to happen without further review by this legislative body and approvals. So this is allowing us to use some of the funds in that CRF to do the evaluation, so that we can bring a plan to you for approval. Is that all?
I think I'm going to take the words out of your mouth, chief. The plan would be that we would likely sell that building, and I've recently got some information that we could sell that building for around a million dollars or so, and so we certainly would not maintain an old and a new building. We would kind of just wait and see. One point five million. So we would, obviously that would not make sense for us to have the old building, but like we said, if this just would give permission to use that money for the next steps to bring this to the voters.
Patty Schauben, Southern London. So there was a comment made early on about this facility right here that we're gathering in is too small, and that was lumped in at the beginning of the conversation about this in our quote municipal building. Are we talking about more than offices and police stations, but are we talking about some other big thing, and I feel like the lobster in the pot, where the heat's going to get turned up and the bucks are going to get turned up, because we need also a bigger building than this one to meet in? And what are we going to do with something that we use once a year to meet in? Is it going to be some other facility? What are we talking about here?
Absolutely. There is absolutely no plan in place, there's no study currently being done about what Becky and I were going back and forth about on the Plan New Hampshire charret design that was given, that we did earlier this year. That building, completely 110% separate from this discussion. So is there a piece of paper with a plan that was given to us as an idea? Yes, there is. Is anyone doing anything about that right at this moment in time? No, there is not. If that were to go forward, we would probably have to come to this meeting year after year for a few years, I would imagine.
But that's a separate issue.
But it's a completely separate issue. This is just the town offices and the police station, that's it.
And I agree, that should have been the fire station years ago. I cannot believe that that didn't happen. Whoever was around was so shortsighted, and it's come back to bite us all the time.
I want to say, I wasn't there for all the fact, so I don't know what other things they had to work, so I don't want to completely, you know, I just think it might have been a missed opportunity.
Amen to that.
Liz Furia, South Road, I'd like to reiterate that we need a police station. We don't need a municipal building, we need a police station, and I'm trying to figure out how, if you're going north on 125, how it's going to be safe to take a left into the safer road at the BRC that's now going to be constructed. We already got that problem at South Road and Temple Madonna, and 125. This makes no sense to me. I also don't think it should be put by the rec center. I think it should be either at South on 125, or it should be, I'm not really big on the hill, by the, the public safety complex should be in the same place, and there should already be a light there.
Jim Hager, 33 Mark Lane. I guess my concern is, honestly, is I don't know how far back the police facility capital reserve fund goes, but I think I've lived here five years, I've supported it, I think, every time, because I felt like, I mean, even before you were here, we needed a new police station, and I think what I saw with the vote is supported it all the time. My concern is that, and some of the other people are saying that, is that, well, if we want to just look into, do we need a new municipal building and do something like that, I think why don't we just make a motion and put some money aside to do a study like that? But like, my fear is that we're taking all of this money, people voted, we passed, we're running toward a new police station, and I think now, if you come up with Plan A, that police station is going to cost this much, and we can do it in this timeframe, a complete municipal complex with a police station and the town hall is going to take this much more money or something, and this much more time. Like, we lost all this time, and like I said, I think people voted to have this for a police station, and if we want to start talking about municipal complexes instead, we should treat that as a municipal complex as a separate standalone issue. And maybe another question is, why is this two-thirds majority required? Is that why? Because, is it because the money had been approved or specific, and now they want to change it? Thank you.
Right. Yes, there's a motion to move the question, is there a second? Okay. All those in favor of moving the question, raise your cards. Opposed? Okay, because this requires a two-third majority vote, we have to count the people, so you have to hold your hands up. All those in favor of adopting Article Five, raise your hand and wait to be counted. Good? All right, all those opposed, raise your cards and hold them up to be counted, please. Ninety-one, yes, there's forty-one knows, and Daphne tells me the math means that's sixty-eight percent, so Article Five passes with the two-third majority. We have a motion to restrict reconsideration and a second, all those in favor. Opposed? The ayes have it, we have restricted reconsideration of Article Five, and we are moving on to Article Six. Capital Reserve Fund Highway Vehicles Equipment, recommended by the select board and the budget committee. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred fifty thousand dollars to be added to the existing highway vehicle equipment capital reserve fund. Majority vote required. Sorry, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second? Okay. The Article Six has been moved and seconded, and the select board will speak to it first.
So our town road agent, Wayne Robinson, anticipates needing to replace three trucks in the next six years. The cost of a new truck is approximately two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and the last one was replaced in 2019. The current fund balance is one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixteen cents.
Mr. Mitchell, on behalf of the budget committee?
Yes, again, this is recommended by the budget committee, and we probably will be in the business of putting a hundred and fifty thousand in each year for the next six years in order to cover these trucks. Thank you.
Okay, Article Six has been moved and seconded, and is open for discussion and debate.
Liz Furia, South Road, I'm for the hundred and fifty thousand, and I move the question.
Nobody's hustling to line, so we have a motion and a second to move the question. All those in favor. Opposed? The ayes have it, we are prepared to vote on Article Six as originally written. All those in favor of adopting Article Six. All those opposed? The ayes have it, Article Six has passed. Anyone want to make a question? Okay, a motion to restrict reconsideration, and do I have a second? Okay, all those in favor of restricting reconsideration of Article Six. All those opposed? We have restricted reconsideration of Article Six, and the great news is, we are on the last page of the warrants. Article Seven, Public Safety Radios, recommended by the select board and the budget committee. To see if the town will vote to establish a public safety radio capital reserve fund under the provisions of RSA 35-1 for public safety radios, installation, and related equipment, and to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty thousand dollars to be placed in said fund. Further, to name the select board as agents to expend. Majority vote required. Do I have a motion?
Move.
All right, it has been moved and seconded, and the select board will speak to it.
So last year, this town meeting was gracious enough and expended a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars so the fire department could get new radios. During that meeting, there was a question brought up, why aren't we saving for that? So this is an answer to that. We just want to serve the savings fund, so that in the future, this town meeting doesn't get bombarded by another hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar bill, and the way prices are going for electronics, it's not going to be a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars next time we ask.
Mr. Mitchell, for the budget committee?
Yes, this is recommended by the budget committee. Again, this is for radios for all public safety departments, not just one, which is what we were saddled with last year. And this also places thirty thousand in the fund.
Okay, discussion and debate is open for Article Seven.
Jim Burlow Scrabble World, we have a revolving ambulance fund. I would amend this, hopefully, to be tabled, so that we can use the revolving ambulance fund money, which has been authorized to be used for, for things like this. So we don't need to raise and appropriate, we already have the money in the revolving ambulance fund, so I'm amending to retable this.
All right, again, under the moderator's rules, we don't accept motions to table unless they're by the sponsor of the article.
Unless you override a vote.
Correct.
Can we put that up for a vote?
Can you make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, too. Do the necessaries necessary to get a table.
So we have a motion to override, we have a motion to override the moderator's decision, do we have a second?
Okay.
All right. We are voting on the motion to override the decision regarding tabling this warrant article. All those in favor of overriding the moderator's rule, raise your cards. All those opposed? The ayes have it. So we are back to discussing Article Seven, Public Safety Radios.
If I can just address Mr. Burlow's question for a minute. This is for all public safety, highway, and police, so I would have to think that the revolving fund for ambulance would be limited to fire and ambulance purchases, and not just ambulance, would not go towards the police and highway departments. That's why we came up with this, Jim.
Gabby Kelly, Mo Hopleen, I support this article and make a call, whatever, what do you say? Motion to call a question.
Okay, Jim, you're still in line, you want to speak before we vote on that?
Then, I would hope that you could recommend to table this, so that you can, moving forward, because there's no rush in this, rework the wording, so that that revolving ambulance fund can not only be just the fire and ambulance, but under the umbrella of public safety. There you go.
We would have to do the same thing we just did to the police facility, and change-
Table this.
We could table this, and then we would have to bring back to town meeting to redesignate the ambulance funds to public service funds, but the fire department uses that to provide ambulance services to the citizens of Brentwood. They have a total EMS budget that is taken out of that fund, and if we start to deplete it for other reasons, eventually more taxation would have to be put into that fund.
However, with the balance of over four hundred thousand dollars in it right now, there's no worry of depletion, et cetera. And the ambulance is taken out already.
Yeah, and those-
Okay, director, commentary, questions to me, please.
Ambulances are not cheap vehicles, and so you want to make, we don't want to put ourselves in this situation. Trust me, you need to be planning for the future of ambulances as well. So unfortunately, it's a reality of public safety.
Yeah, so we have a motion to move the question, and I think it was seconded, am I correct?
I seconded it.
Okay, so all those in favor of moving the question. Opposed? The ayes have it, and we are prepared to vote on Article Seven. All those in favor of the adoption of Article Seven. All those opposed? Article Seven passes. I know, any motions?
Motion to restrict reconsideration.
All right, we have a motion to restrict reconsideration, and it's been seconded, all those in favor. Opposed? The ayes have it, and we have restricted reconsideration of Article Seven. We are moving on to Article Eight, Revolving Fund Solar, recommended by the select board. To see if the town will vote to establish a solar revolving fund pursuant to RSA 31-95- To see if the town will vote to establish a solar revolving fund pursuant to RSA 3195H for the purpose of maintaining and operating the town-owned solar panels. All revenues received for said purpose from the sale of renewable energy credits will be deposited into the fund, and the money in the fund shall be allowed to accumulate from year to year and shall not be considered part of the town's general fund balance. The town treasurer shall have custody of all monies in the fund and shall pay out the same only upon order of the governing body, and no further approval is required by the legislative body to expend. Such funds may be expended only for the purpose of which the fund was created. Majority vote required. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
The Select Board will speak to the article.
Okay, we've been working towards terminating our power purchase agreement with Revision Energy and buying the solar panels. Once we have acquired them, we will enter into an operation and maintenance agreement for routine service and repairs. We would like to sell the renewable energy credits and use the funds to offset the cost of maintenance and repair.
No commentary from the Budget Committee? Okay. So this is open for debate and discussion.
Gabby Kelly, Mo Hopleen, I support this and call the question. Motion.
You do have people in line behind you, so I'll accept your motion, allowing them to speak.
Bill Dunham, Block Drive. "I hate that set of solar panels on Route 25. It looks like a set of bleachers, and if we got rid of it tomorrow, I would love it. But it looks as if that's not going to happen, but it begs the question." And this is a question that I had brought up to, I think, our Energy and Efficiency Committee after having read the Harvard Business Review article about what are we going to do to finally dispose of this thing somewhere down the line? The fact is that these panels apparently cannot be disposed of at the moment. They cannot be recycled according to the Harvard Business Review, and why is that? Because the production side of the equation, that is, the numbers of panels that are being produced, is far outpacing those which are being recycled or put into a landfill. So what is happening is that they cannot separate the glass from the toxic metal, including the lead, and they are winding up in landfills. So what happens if we do absolutely nothing? If we have no money to this whatsoever, but maybe consider moving it on to a different parcel where nobody has to look at it for the rest of our lives? Thank you.
Eric Drumble Gordon wrote, "My question on this article is, we're asked to approve an unknown amount of money, and as I read this, if I'm reading it correctly, the governing body can spend the money whenever they like, however they want, without coming back to the town."
So just a clarification on this?
It says, "As required..." And the fund is just maintenance? And what do you call it? That's what I'm saying. It said, "We're giving..." We don't know how much money's coming in. We're giving the board power to spend it any way they want. I would prefer to have it come back. At least we know where things are going for maintenance, like we do for other things.
Tom Powell, 19 P P D. I'm on the Energy Committee, and the Energy Committee agreed with anything to do with supporting that system. I do... The gentleman I was talking about, disposal, that's a problem down the road. Taking it out today and putting it someplace else would cost way too much money. But one thing that we do know is that system creates kill hour, which reduces our bill that we have to pay, so why move it? Second, these recs, which probably no one understands what they are, is cash flow also. Things that can be maintained are, one day, ten panels just go out. Somebody has to come and figure it out and figure out what's wrong with it. There's a thing called an inverter. Two inverters, I think there are. Those eventually need to be replaced. The panels themselves will probably last forty years, and I think they've been there about eight years. So I think we should really move forward and say yes to this one.
Jim Berlo Scrabble wrote, "Do we have any idea how much the panels generate toward their carbon credits, or whatever you call it? Energy credits?"
Thanks for the question. The amount of... So I'm going to back up, I'm going to answer your question on part two. Part one is, this warrant article isn't an expenditure, per se. It is allowing us to basically create a savings account and put the money generated by what are called the renewable energy credits, the recs, the money that comes in from the excess generation of the solar panels into this savings account so that we can maintain the system, right? Because we generate more electricity than we use, and so we get paid because of that. So then, hit me with your question more time. How much?
What does that cash amount?
Roughly. It can change. Roughly, right about now, it's about $5,000 a year.
Okay, I'm against this article because we should take that money and use it as part of our incoming revenue, and we have no idea on maintenance costs on a yearly basis, and because these things never break down, we should see then what that cost is going to be before we spend money on it. Bring this into the revenue stream, and I'm against this.
Okay, so everyone who was in line when we had the motion to move the question has spoken, so I'm going to vote on the motion to move the question. All those in favor of moving the question? All those opposed? Okay, we are now voting on Article 8, Revolving Fund for Solar. All in favor of adopting Article 8? Raise your cards. All those opposed? I think the ayes have it. Okay. Article 8 passes. All right, we have a motion to restrict reconsideration and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? We have restricted reconsideration of Article 8, and we are on our final warrant article, Article 9. Revolving Fund for Emergency Management, recommended by the Select Board. To see if the town will vote to establish an emergency management equipment revolving fund pursuant to RSA 3195H for the purpose of maintaining and operating equipment for the Emergency Operations Center. All revenues received for said purpose from the New Hampshire Department of Safety in connection with the Seabrook Station R E P plan will be deposited into the fund, and the money in the fund shall be allowed to accumulate from year to year and shall not be considered part of the town's general fund balance. The town treasurer shall have custody of all monies in the fund and shall pay out the same only upon order of the governing body, and no further approval is required by the legislative body to expend. Such funds may be expended only for the purpose for which the fund was created. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second? And do we have someone who's going to speak to it?
Yes. So we're going to let our Emergency Management Director, Rick Murphy, speak to this. Just any question? The R E P stands for Radiological Emergency Plan.
I am going to make this very quick. We receive $8,500 yearly from the Seabrook Nuclear Power Plant. It allows us to manage our radiological plan for the Seabrook Nuclear Power Plant evacuation zone. Many years, this money does not go completely to the state. In the past, it has been reverted back to the general fund. By allowing us to accumulate this money into a separate fund, we would then be able to have money on hand to deal with emergency management issues that may occur within the town, such as the failure of a generator, the replacement of a generator, a generator switch that we need to have repaired. So to try to minimize those large ticket cost items by accumulating this money that we get from the Nuclear Power Plant, there is no tax cost, no burden to the taxpayer on this particular area.
Okay, Article 9 is now open for debate and discussion. Liz Coria South wrote, "It says for the purpose of maintaining and operating equipment for the Emergency Operations Center." Where is that?
That is at the fire station, and we operate our emergency operations center from the fire station.
Jim Berlo Scrabble wrote, "I'm against this. We should take that money into the revenue stream and see what happens, et cetera, on a maintenance and maintenance standpoint."
I'll speak to that.
So if we roll this money into the general fund, which has been done in the past, that will save approximately .01% on the tax bill. If we have a $45,000 transfer switch that needs to be replaced for a generator under emergency conditions, then we would have to come back to the board, spend that money where we could be saving approximately three cents on the budget by having that money accumulated.
Bill Coria South wrote, "You all don't realize how lucky you are. I'm sitting here, and that's the word." Okay. I need to speak to this because I don't know if any of you have ever used the emergency facilities we have in Brentwood. I have, and they do a great job. It doesn't cost us anything, and this money doesn't cost us anything, and it allows them to plan for emergencies that we don't know are coming. So if you ever been through an ice closeout and you didn't have any power for a week, you go to the fire department, and they help you.
Motion to move the question. Motion to move the question.
You're in line, you can speak.
Becky Dunn, Nine Block Drive. "Just a question about it. I know for the school reserve funds for special education or other purposes, there's a cap on that fund. Would there be a cap on this fund, saying you've got to a certain level, then the money so could accumulate for..."
For as many years.
As many years, so it could be $100,000.
Yes, ma'am.
Wow. Well, I just think there should be a cap.
Well, it doesn't mean that the money during the present fiscal year will be spent on something. For example, we get $8,500 per year.
Great, per year.
If way more come to me tomorrow, my apologies.
If way more come to me tomorrow and said, "Listen, a bunch of our cones or barricades have been damaged," some of that money will be used.
Okay.
It's what's left over at the end of the year that we can put into this accumulating fund.
Okay, but no cap, just that?
Again, I think expenditures would probably negate the reason we have it have.
Okay. Thank you, just curious.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move the question. All those in favor of moving the question? Opposed? The ayes have it, and we are ready to vote on Article 9, Revolving Fund for Emergency Management, as originally written. All those in favor of adopting Article 9? All those opposed? The ayes have it. We have a motion to restrict reconsideration and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Well, I think... Is there any other business before the legislative body? Okay. Okay, seeing no one... Oh, so one person, one minute.
Every day, I look at the necrology in the town book, see how many people that I know from long times past, especially those who have done something about making Brentwood a great town as it is. And I ask this board, or this meeting, to adjourn in their memory. Specifically, Herb Stinas, many of you years ago remember him as a law firm's milkman who used to bring the milk to the house back in old days. Joe Ganzar, who ran the Brentwood Forest Chalk and was active in the senior program for many years. Norm Lambert, who ran the Brentwood Machine Shop, which has benefited to the town over the years. And many of you don't know Tom Patterson or Peterson. He was in Brentwood up for years, and he also, many don't realize, was on the embassy in Sudan for a couple of years. So he served not only Brentwood, but the country and world. So I ask that this meeting be adjourned in their memory.
So we have a motion to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor of adjourning or adjamming? All those opposed? The meeting is adjourned, thank you.